Good evening, everyone.
All right, good evening, everyone. We are gonna call the order of a regular Board of Education meeting for the school district of North Amelac today on Monday, October 27th at 6:00 PM. So we'll do roll call, Rick, when you're ready.
Goings.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Matthew here. Humphner. Addison, Gekerman.
Here. And then next item is public notification of meeting.
Postings at the district office, FLC, BAMs, Trefford, Horace Mann, and Village.
Everyone can please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, relish all your justice.
All right, our next item on our agenda is our board mission statement and agreements.
Yeah, I'm gonna go over agreements. So our three agreements are stand up moment, curse a grill, and we are one. These three are our beliefs, and the beliefs then drive our experiences for the people that are around us. And as a board, when we act within here, we have candid yet curious conversations. We learn from what we're going on, and then we do this together to best serve our whole community and our district.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. Next item is approval of consent agenda. We only have one item on our consent agenda this time, and it's approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2025. So I'll look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I had to roll one already.
Matthew, yes.
Yes.
Goings.
Yes.
Gekerman.
Yes. Next item is our treasurer's report, which is found in our packet. Which also, I guess, could've done together, we need to make a motion to approve our treasurer's report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll start.
It's gonna add a line in.
Okay, so is Katie?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Goings.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Matthew, yes. Gekerman.
Yes. All right, next item is board members share a moment of pride. So I don't know if anyone would like to kick us off?
I guess I'll start. The first, of course, was homecoming. Always a fun day, a fun week, I guess, depending on your perspective, I guess, or the buildings and that. But it's always great to see the crowd tends to double or even triple, I think. I don't know what the numbers are, but it's great to see people back and coming back and just having fun, kids having fun. And the other thing is I completed my principal visits this week, or this month, and enjoyed that very much. You know, we see the principals around a little bit, but actually just sit down one-on-one. Very enlightening and just, I was struck by where we're at now at the principal level. And in my years that I've been doing this as a whole, I don't think we've ever had a more talented, more quality group of principals than we have right now. So that's just a great thing for the district and that, so.
Awesome. John?
Cross-country finished their year, and I believe Coach Drew's, this is her last year. Sorry. I hear he's during. So shout out to her. The team had a good year this year. The boys finished second in the conference. Two of the boys made first team all-conference, and one made second team. And one of the girls made second team all-conference, so they had a pretty good year. And I know Coach Drew's has put in a lot of time with that team and appreciate all her efforts.
Awesome. Michael, Katie?
Yeah, I also finished up visits with the principals. I've been kind of sharing some of that through the months here, so I wanted to share that I went Tiffany at Trefford. And I really appreciate their space over there and innovation that they have with that space. The space isn't super conducive to what, you know, a class typical classroom looks like. But they've been really good and innovative with what they've been doing over there. Got to walk through and see when the kids are learning in the environment that they're in, so it was pretty cool. And then I got to help with Popcorn Friday at FLC, so anybody who doesn't know, it's the kids get to bring a dollar, buy a bag of popcorn, and then it's usually like one Friday a month, and the money goes back to the school. First, student engagement type things. What I thought was really cool and made, I think, North Amelac really special places that there were so many staff that came in and were like, can I throw in a couple bucks to, you know, get any kids that didn't bring popcorn popcorn? And I thought that that was really cool. We covered all the kids in the whole school about popcorn that day, so that was pretty cool.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had two additional things. One was just our incubator program with Mr. Wismer. I know, obviously, he does a wonderful job. The kids do a wonderful job. But also the mentors from the community that come in and spend time with them, I think is just another unique thing that we offer here in our district. And then just the teachers, I got to experience parent-teacher conferences from Horace Mann's side, so I can only speak to that experience. But it was outstanding, well-run. I really liked that. And we used to do it where all the teachers were sitting in the commons, I think. Now you get your own individual space, and I think the conversations are much better with that. And I know the other schools equally probably did a great experience as well. So just thank you for the teachers on those really long days. I totally get it. So, awesome. Next item we're gonna move on to is BAM's Students' Community Service Project, so.
I'm gonna welcome up two of my amazing students. So first quarter, we have been really busy at Bessie Allen. This year, we launched a new class called Community Service, focused on kids giving back to their community in some way, shape, or form. And this year, Mrs. Bullen has done an amazing job within the class. She actually takes on an eighth-grade class for community service. And I would like to introduce to you Annabelle and Charlotte. And they're gonna tell you about the community service project that they implemented this quarter.
Hello, everybody. Three weeks ago, Charlotte and I took a snack cart around Bessie Allen.
Our snack cart had chips, candy, bakers, and the best of all bubbler's.
With the snack cart, you're hoping to raise money for Sandy Paws?
Her main goal was to raise a hundred dollars or more to support Sandy Paws.
After only a week of selling at our school, we raised six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents to donate.
We hope this donation can help get food, toys, or beds for the dogs less on the street and help the staff.
We then presented at our school to show what we've been working on raising this money and hoping to present to Sandy Paws. They're still trying to get in contact with Charlotte, but we're proud of how it turned out. We first got the idea for this project and was the bull's community service class. She wanted each of us to create a project that would help the community. We planned out our project, talked with both people, and got the approval. We made posters, put together the card, and started. After the week of selling, we did a reflection and realized how much of the animals and staff would be able to help.
We are hoping that once we give the money to Sandy Paws, it will really help them greatly.
We'd love to say thank you to all the people who have helped us throughout this project.
This includes Ms. Bullen, Ms. Escobar, and Ms. Vanderfass, and everyone who donated to our project.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us on top of this. Have a good night.
And I have to say, these two ladies were so well-organized. They really set the bar for how to take an idea from just an idea piece of paper and make it come to life, and they did a great job and had a great impact for the Sandy Paws community.
That's awesome.
So before, I got a question.
We got questions. We can't leave just because we.
Yeah, really hard one. Yeah, yeah. First off, great job on six hundred and seventy-two dollars, you said? Twenty-two, awesome, awesome. This is a kind of random question. I heard you smile when you said bubbler's. What's your favorite bubbler kind?
The orange, there's like a orange.
Orange one? Yeah, there you go. Awesome. Well, hey, great job on it, so.
So, did you, I don't know, maybe you mentioned this, but did you bring a, did a puppy come to? Nope, we didn't have it?
And then we're sure.
Okay, but they wouldn't come to.
It's a sore spot after me.
I know they were so anxious, and I had to leave before that, so I was like, hoping they'd come to. And I also want to recognize Kelly Bullen. She's here with us today, and like, all of her work, she's just an amazing person for our district who just makes it happen every day for our kids, so appreciate you and all that you do as well. Any other questions for? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we will move on now to Horace Mann High School Student Council, so the floor is yours.
Um, good evening, board members. I'm excited to share some highlights from student council and those updates from other clubs. Activities happening at Horace Mann High School. Fall musical, the Fall Musical cast and crew have been working extremely hard to prepare for their upcoming performances. Rehearsals have been going on for weeks, and everything is coming together nicely. Tickets are now available for purchases in the high school office during school hours, and now audience members can pick them up at the will-call table on show night. Performance dates are Friday, November 7th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, November 8th, 7:00 PM, Sunday, November 9th, 2:00 PM. This year's production comes to be a great showcase of our students' creativity, talent, and teamwork. We had Chunk of Tree. It was a community success. Our annual Chunk of Tree event was a big success with over a hundred children attending. Students and staff decorated their vehicles and handed out candy, providing a safe and fun environment for local families. This continues to be one of our favorite community-building events and a great way to engage younger kids in a positive school experience. Tuff Forest starts next week. Our annual Tuff Forest competition begins next week and runs through the end of November. Each homeroom will collect money that goes towards purchasing Christmas gifts and essential items for students of all families in need. The homeroom that raises the most funds in each grade level will win daily farts as a prize. Pinkout will be February 13th. Student Council will host our Pinkout event on February 13th to raise funds for breast cancer awareness and research. Activities will include gravel baskets, baked foods, and pins for sale, as well as homeroom collections. A prize for that type, the top fundraising homeroom will be announced closer to the event. For NHS, the National Honor Society recently completed its first round of Halloween readings at Friendship, which went very well. Members are contained students with themed stories and plan to return for Thanksgiving reading leader this month. NHS also held a Halloween donut sale, which had great participation and helped raise funds for upcoming services projects. For SRE, SRE is currently running a food drive through November 7th to support individuals who may lose their SNAP benefits due to federal program changes. All donated items will go to local food pantries and community organizations to help families in need. For student accomplishments, the soccer team finished 10-8-3 overall with a 7-0-2 undefeated conference record, finishing second in the conference. A major accomplishment for the soccer team was advancing to the second round of playoffs by winning their first-ever playoff game to the one against Green Bay Southwest. All sports wrapped up strong seasons, and students are transitioning into winter activities. On behalf of the cross-country program, I am excited to share a summary of our 2025 season and extend our heartfelt appreciation to everyone who made this year so special. Boys team highlights, conference achievement. The boys team placed second at the 2025 Flyway Conference Championship at Willing Meadows, finishing with a total of sixty-five points. All-conference honors Logan Putty and Casey Scravener earned all-conference first-team honors, placing fifth and sixth overall, respectively. Eli Hartwig Oakfield was named all-conference second-team with an eleventh-place finish. Jackson Chapman, Julian, and Kayden Andrews, twenty-third, received all-conference honorable mention. Sectional performance at the D2 Sectional Five in Portage, the boys placed 12 out of 17 teams. Special congratulations to Logan Putty for running a personal best of seventeen-ten, which now stands as the fastest boys' time on that course. Girls team highlights, the girls team highlights, team placed in a very tough field at the conference championships. Abby Winner earned all-conference second-team honors with a thirteenth-place finish. Violet Lane received all-conference honorable mention for her twenty-fourth finish. A season of transition this year was especially pointed at, as it was marked at the end of those eras in cross-country. It was a heart-wrenching day at sectional, but also a moment to reflect on the legacy and pride the team has brought to our schools. Gratitude and acknowledgements, Coach Drew's would like to extend sincere gratitude to the following individuals who have contributed to the success of our program. Coaches Doc Forsythe and Braden Gibson for starting the co-op in uniting districts in support of cross-country. Former athletic directors, Mr. Richram, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Dostock, and Mrs. Escobar for their unwavering support and dedication to scheduling. Current athletic directors, Mr. Mock and Mr. Palada. With special thanks to Mr. Mock for seven years of exceptional support. Mrs. Emo, Athletic Secretary, U-Rock, thank you for all you do behind the scenes. Parents for trusting us with your students, athletes, and for the endless support that is a backbone of our program. Athletes, most importantly, thank you for every athlete who has worn the O's jersey. You have represented our sport, schools, and community with honor and pride, and has been the absolute best experience coaching you. Thank you to everyone who has supported the O's cross-country program. Your commitment and encouragement have made our success possible and created memories that will last in lifetime. With sincere gratitude, Coach Drew's. Overall, president students continue to make the school proud, both academically and athletically. And that is it. Any questions?
It's a lot in the month. Were you at Trick or Trunk? Okay.
Trick or treat, yes.
Yeah, yeah. What was how, what was the numbers like? And were, you know, I think the years before, there was lines and lines of people.
Yeah, I think this time there was more. I think there was a bit more of a spread of a word from the beginning. I think like more than, I think it was more than fifty kids than last year, as, that's my estimate. My son was the last kid, and he got the most. He came home with a lot of kids, you know?
Isn't there usually a contest of like, who's decorated the best, like, how that alternate?
Yes, I'm not sure if, it was already announced, as I've worked during like the afternoon. But yes, there's like three baskets, one for the best costumes, like overall. And the scariest theme, I'm not sure what was the third basket for, but yes, there's prizes for that.
Thanks, lady.
Is there anything else?
Oh, nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. All right, our next item on our agenda is the clerk's report. So, Rick, if you have, when you're ready.
Donations for Backpack Buddies, Wayne and Jenna Shingin, fifty dollars. All Tools MTD Inspection, one thousand dollars. Thank you to those guys.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Next item is our citizens comment. This gives an opportunity for anyone that would like to make a comment. Just ask them to state their name and address, and then keep their comment to three minutes, so. Don't think we have anyone, so we will move on. Dr. Minno, it's all you, superintendent.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. We go through the superintendent's report via our buckets for our strategic plan, and we walk through them. The first one we're gonna cover tonight is learning and academics, and we're grateful to have Julian Escobar, Principal of BAMs, here tonight to present, but also Kara Hartoff, who's our literacy coordinator, and a couple other folks here in the room that will get announced and introduced very shortly. So it's all yours. I will flip to you.
All right, so we're gonna go through a variety of stuff with you tonight. In particular, we'll start with achievement, talking about both ELA and BAM. We'll talk about what our action steps are based off of the data we had this fall. We'll talk about how the work that we're doing in these two areas align to our universal tenants. And then we'll cap off our time with you, talking a little bit about culture and belonging at Bessie Allen, and just talking about like looking ahead, what are we going to do? So we're gonna start with our ELA data, and I will go through two different data sets. We'll look at our forward overall results, and we'll look at our I-Ready, and we'll talk more about I-Ready soon. But according to our forward results that came in with our assessment last spring, thirty-five percent of our students are proficient in reading. And the important thing to keep in mind is this is just one dipstick, right? We're trying to develop several dipsticks to get a better understanding of where our students are at with these different skills. And so that brings us into a brand-new diagnostic that we introduced this year, and Kara's gonna talk more about that. Keep in mind, last year we did AIMS Web, and we had some struggles with AIMS Web. It wasn't really user-friendly in terms of the adults trying to dig into the data. It was hard to really like laser in on what specific skills our students were struggling in. And so I'm gonna put Kara here on the hot spot, and she's gonna tell you more about her ELA data. Awesome. So we also did the I-Ready assessment, just like at FLC and Trefford. We did it at Bessie Allen as well. This gives us our baseline data for the school year. This is our overall placement of where students are landing. We have also been working with I-Ready closely. We've had some of their professional development come in and just tell us more about what these numbers mean, how we can best service our students based off of what our specific district is seeing from our diagnostics. So when his name was Joel, when he came and talked to us about our data, he really just let us know that that yellow section doesn't necessarily mean that they are below grade level. That could mean that they're testing at end of year of the, of the grade level that they're coming from. So anyone in the red, we are one hundred percent concerned about and have a strategic plan in place for all of those students. And then our tier-one instruction is going to support the percentages in the yellow and the green as well, as the students in the red. Are there any questions on the colors? Anyone need a refresher? I know you kind of learned a little bit about I-Ready already, but I want to make sure you understand the colors.
If I read this right, we're at thirty-five, forty-six percent on this test would be proficient. Do you consider yellow and green proficient?
As of right now, we do, yes. So then mid-year, that'll change. The yellow will no longer be proficient.
Okay, 'cause I was trying to match up the forward numbers.
Yep. Oh, sure. Yep. These are like our, our students who tier-one instruction is going to be enough. You know, like giving them that solid tier-one instruction is gonna get them to proficiency. So it'll be really interesting to look at how that yellow shrinks once we do that mid-year diagnostic, and our goal is that yellow's minimal when we get to the end of the year diagnostic in the spring. So then this is just a breakdown of the grade levels as well. It's similar to adult, sorry, I was just gonna add, it's similar to FLC where we noticed that the lowest gap of achievement, you know, like we're starting with first grade, the gap is lower. We kind of see that with the six, seven, and eight, too. Once the standards become more progressive, we see a larger gap in the eighth grade as well. And then this is what Julian was talking about with the breakdown. This is what teachers are able to use to see what are we going to provide, not only in addition to our tier-one instruction, but also to support students who are below grade level as well. What areas can we decide as a school we're going to initiate in all, across all content areas? It gives us a little bit more of a snapshot of what our students need.
Can you just walk through those specifics of people? I mean, we've heard it, but I think it's important to go through those components.
Yeah, so that phonological awareness is not tested. It is when I say cat that a kid can go at, you know, any of those oral, oral pieces that come in, in addition to phonics. So then we are testing in phonics. In, at the middle school, they start with vocabulary and either go up or down from there. So not all students are tested in phonics. It is if their vocabulary is testing below grade level enough that they are testing in phonics. Our high-frequency words is similar to that, and then our vocabulary is where all kids start on their I-Ready diagnostic.
Thank you.
And then comprehension, yes. So the comprehension piece is the, is the end of the test. Just something to be aware of, too. It's when kids' Siamas might be getting lower, and we know that it's beginning of the year. It's something that we're working on as well. And then it breaks down into fiction and nonfiction texts as well. And so that bottom bar that you see there, that informational text, that nonfiction text, is really where we see the greatest need, and that's where we're gonna really put a lot of time and energy in this year to making sure that our universal instruction practices around that, in addition to other interventions and things that we're doing, that those pieces are in place to help move that needle. So as we take, keeping this in mind, as we move into trying to determine what is our SLO gonna be this year? And so there's, one of the great things about I-Ready is it gives you projections. Based on what your results are in the fall, where do we think you'll be by the end of the year? And it gives you two different ones, typical growth, okay? So if all students just make typical growth, we would get to thirty-six percent by the end of the year. And typical growth is a year's growth from wherever they're starting. So if they're an eighth grader who's starting at grade two, a typical growth would be a year's growth from that. Okay? And then it also does something called projected stretch growth. And this is where students are gonna gain more than a year's growth. And so how do we figure out where do we land on this? So we had a lot of conversation because we know there will be some students that will make typical growth, right? But we also know that students are gonna push themselves, and some are gonna reach that stretch goal. So we're gonna land somewhere in the middle. So keeping that in mind, like if every single student would make their stretch goal, they say we could get to sixty-seven percent by the end of the year. But keep in mind, is it feasible that every student's gonna make their stretch goal? Probably not. It's gonna land somewhere in that middle ground. And so with that in mind, our goal would be that we would be at forty-five percent by the end of the year. And that would be pretty significant change for Bessie to go from down in those low twenties up into the forties. We are going to focus on I-Ready being our main diagnostic as forward results. We won't get that until closer to the end of the year. We wanna know more. And because we are living in the I-Ready world, I'll talk more about that later. We're gonna be able to track students' progress throughout the year, so it's really an awesome tool. I'm grateful that the district was able to find a way to bring this onboard because this tool is a game changer for us in terms of letting us know what do we need to work on. And we just have to take that data and put it into some action plans.
And the slide before, it talked about like level one, two, three, four. How does that, like, what is, what are those levels?
Can you go back a slide?
Sorry, 'cause it would be the one before.
Can I do that like that?
Ah, you can, but there you go. Oh.
Because the one before was like grades below, and now we're in like, what equals a level four or level one?
Yeah, so it's the, um, the, I'm just gonna look quick before I.
Oh, you're fine. I'm sure you saw it, and I just didn't.
Yes, and we, um, so this is students who are proficient and not proficient, and then there is that well-above proficient, like the above grade level is that dark blue.
Okay.
And then, yeah, the level four, and then the level three is proficient, and then the not proficient, and the significantly below grade level.
Okay, so they just took out that yellow section from that.
Kind of put them in two different camps.
Okay, thank you.
So that is our SLO for this year for Bessie Allen. I'm really looking forward to, as we launch Power Hour, and I'll talk more about that soon, to do that mid-year diagnostic. I know I don't wanna rush the game, but I'm really interested because I'm watching kids, and they're putting the time in right now, and I'm like, oh, I just, I wanna have a progress update right now. But in January, it'll be exciting to come back to you in the winter and kind of give you an update on where that needle is moving.
I don't know if you're gonna touch on this, but can you tell everybody what they're doing right now?
Yep.
From, okay, perfect.
Yep. Get in there, get in there. So what are our action steps? So one of the big things that we wanna do is make sure that we give our staff time to collaborate in their grade level teams and across content levels as well. And so that's gonna take place in two different areas. We were able to bring team time back to Bessie this year, so they do have a common time where they can get together and talk about literacy strategies. It doesn't matter if you're science or social studies, everybody teaches literacy, right? And so talking about what kind of vocabulary activities are you doing? How could that relate in my area? They're having time for that. And we're also focusing our CT time on Wednesday mornings around that collaboration as well. And teams are also, they selected anywhere from three to five students that they're really focusing in, on those students that are really struggling, and they're collaborating around those students to see how they are universally supporting them across. And we'll be following those students' data to see how they improve with that intentionality behind the instruction. And the good thing about that is what you do for those kids are also good for other kids, so that's just good practices across the board. The other thing that we will be doing with ELA is implementing coaching cycles on universal instruction. As I mentioned previously, everyone is a literacy teacher. We need to read, write, communicate in every content area we do, not just in com skills, but also in health class and art class. And so we are going to be working very closely with our amazing instructional coach, Jen Towell. I know she's here today. And digging into the data with her, we know what work we need to do. Our PD day that we had, what seems like it was a while ago, but like a week or so ago, she already started teaching them instructional strategies to try their task with going back and trying. she already started teaching them instructional strategies to try their task with going back and trying that, gathering evidence. When we meet back in November, we're gonna revisit that. So you're gonna see that cycle with our PD always coming back and revisiting and growing. And we'll expand on that toolbox that they're creating with the help of Jen and Kara. If you, if you think back to those charts that we showed you where those students were in the red, those students, we are going to be progress monitoring. Um, they were in progress monitoring students today. That literally is just a quick, like one-minute test that they do with those students where they read aloud a passage and they're just marking, are they reading it correctly? What that is gonna tell us is.
And then how many words permanent, because we know fluency matters.
Yep. And that information will tell us what we're doing, if it's working or not for that student. And for, when it's working for the student, awesome, we stay the course, right? But when we find that a student is still struggling and not making the gains we anticipate, those are the students we know we need to do something different for. We need to do something more intensive to try to close those skill gaps, okay? Tied in with all this is just building our professional development focused around universal best practices. You'll hear me talk about it a lot, and I've said it already a couple times tonight. Everyone is teaching literacy at Bessie Allen. That's a non-negotiable. Um, and when we all start pulling in the same direction, I'll tell you right now, the staff has been so resilient this year taking this on 'cause we piled a lot of new stuff on them. They're taking it in stride and we're gonna see the needle move, and that's exciting for our kids. We need to create additional opportunities to have student-focused data conversations. Like when we meet for CTEs, it needs to be intentional. It needs to be talking about the data, 'cause the data is telling us a story. And that story is gonna indicate what we need to do. It can't just be those general conversations anymore. It needs to be data-specific. And we can go into I-Ready right now. We can see the students, that what lessons they're working on, the areas that they're struggling in. All that information is gonna tell us the things that we need to be doing differently, whether that be with our Power Hour or OT time, or even just additional supports in the regular ed classroom. Um, and that gets to the last part, which I think Kara and Jen Towell and I are super excited about is Power Hour. And so I know I talked to a lot of you when you came to meet with me at Bessie, um, but knowing that our data is where it's at. You know, we have a low percentage of our students that are, students that are proficient in reading. That, that's our current state. We accept that. We have to do some heavy lifting to move that needle. And so recognizing that, we knew that we needed to restructure what was our enrichment hour, where things like community service were happening. We need to find time to focus on I-Ready. 'Cause I-Ready in itself is an intervention tool. And 80% of our students, according to our data, need an intervention because they're significantly behind. Um, the reality of the situation is that in com skills and in math, we can't reach the minimum minutes in a given week 'cause our class periods are 49 minutes. By the time you come in, get settled to attendance, we can't take out 15 minutes a day to get 45 minutes of I-Ready and by the end of the week. We need to find additional time where there can be some intentionality behind the implementation of that. So today was the first day of second quarter. That's when we launched Power Hour. And so Monday through Thursday, all students are going to be in, it's essentially going back to when they had a win time, but this is more systematized and it's very prescribed in terms of what happens during that time. So the first 22 to 23 minutes of that class period, they're focused on I-Ready minutes. So in I-Ready, they have something called teacher-assigned lessons where we can assign them things based on what we're seeing, or they go in my pathways. Wherever the student landed on their diagnostic, that's where the pathway starts. So it's meeting the student exactly where they need to be. Nothing's gonna be way over their head or way underneath unless they kind of just click, click, click on the test. But we can easily adjust those when we notice those things that are happening. And so students go through a series of lessons each day and slowly start closing that gap. On Fridays, we've reserved for that is your free time if you've met your goal for the week of reaching your minutes and you're maintaining accuracy. Past lessons in I-Ready are considered 70%. I can tell you based on the data that I'm seeing, a majority of our students are, 90% are higher on their lessons, which is great. Um, we do have some students that are struggling. Those are the ones we gotta lean in and figure out, is it because you're not buying in? Or is it because there's a more significant skill gap? And that's where we can do some progress monitoring to figure out what's going on in those cases. So in the first half of that class, that's where they do their I-Ready. The second half is when they do something called a choice board activity to focus on making sure they have enough time to get their homework done. 'Cause that is one area that I would tell you at the middle school. If homework doesn't get done at school, it's very rarely getting done at home unless you are in a very small percentage of the population that actually does it at home. Kids come from all backgrounds and they have all different scenarios happening. And not all of them go home to an environment that's conducive to doing homework. So our teachers do a great job of trying to narrow it down, but there are things that we're noticing with our new ELA curriculum. We just don't have enough time to get to. Now they'll have some time to do a little bit extra. Now during that other time, that's where myself, Kara, Jen, or other teachers that have intervention backgrounds, we can go in and push and work with some of those students that are struggling or that are more in that red area as well. Questions on Power Hour?
So I'm just, yeah, it's exciting to, I know I had a chance to talk with you a month ago and it's exciting to see that it's happening. I guess what I'd be interested in in the future is what, now that, once it's going, what else is needed to support that, to sustain it, so?
And that is something I'll mention more in the end. I think there's a lot of question marks, right? And I think it's too early to tell. I think we can kind of anticipate some of those needs, but I think we need to get to the mid-year diagnostic and see where that number shrinks, because I think that is gonna tell us more of what those additional needs are. So you can anticipate when I meet with you in the middle of the year that I'll kind of be highlighting some of those future needs that we might need to focus on. Right now, it's just speculation. I just think, you know, you know, the data is pretty, you know, when you see it, it's significant, right? When we have so many kids that are behind, and so, you know.
Jen and I like to roll up our sleeves, I'll say that. But, oh, I think we only roll up sometimes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so I mean, I, I'd like to think that we are gonna make some big gains just focusing in I-Ready right now. It'll be interesting to see where kids land in the middle of the year. Coupled with all this happening in ELA, we launched a new curriculum tool across six, seven, and eight. Um, and it has been a pretty heavy lift, I have to say. And so, um, and it's, what's really great about adopting Amplify or piloting Amplify this year is that it is a direct continuation of what they're doing with CKLA at the elementary. And that was a missing piece that we had across the district that we weren't always pulling in the same direction. It's like, good work was happening here, and then all of a sudden, rather than continue that and find something that pairs well, we changed it up and did something completely different, and now kids are struggling. And so now we really have this bridge that was built that I'm anticipating in five years, we're gonna see a major shift um, with all the work that got started last year at FLC and what we're starting here. Uh, but we have just a fantastic literacy team at Bessie that has taken this heavy lift, because I can tell you as a former teacher that has had to implement a new curriculum, that is a big ask. That's, you're, you're essentially flying the plane as you're building it, right? And you never know what the end goal is, 'cause you're just trying to survive day by day, week by week, as you're learning the curriculum as you go. Um, and so, you know, all of our ELA teachers, Lee Score, Adam Mickey, Jess Whit, along with our sped crew, Stacia Weber, Stacia Weber, Sarah McDowell, Molly Brez, and then our ML teachers, Jessica Littlejohn and Marco Goth have been immensely supportive of each other, communicating well, learning from each other. 'Cause even though you're in different grade levels, there's things that they're learning about our platform um, that are helping each other out. And we've been having great sessions with Amplify. We meet with them monthly, kind of like troubleshooting, what are our pain points? They walk us through it, it's been super helpful. Um, and none of this would be possible if it wasn't for Kara and Jen that are in there coaching up and supporting our staff. Um, because this is, like I said, this is a huge change. We haven't had an ELA adoption at Bessie, from my understanding, since 2000. That, that's mind-blowing. So it was time to bring something on. And to help us understand a little bit more of Amplify, 'cause it's really an awesome platform. And I, as much as I know it can be stressful for our teachers as they're learning it, I wanted to invite Lee Score, who is a shining star on our LIT team, to kind of share with you about Amplify, so you can understand from the teacher perspective um, what's going on and seeing how different it is for our students and how they're learning literacy now. It's really exciting stuff.
Where would you like to be?
Oh, do you want me to come up here?
Wherever you wanna be, I'll just give you the control.
Oh, run, but they power.
Yes.
If I pass out, forgive me, I can speak to 300 kids, no problem, uh, group of adults, I'm already hyperbolic.
So you've heard these, ooh, these terms, ELA, CKLA, Amplify. What Amplify just is, is the continuation, as Mrs. Esquillo said, from the K5 program now through six, eight. So this evening, I brought some of the different materials and answer any questions you might have about what we're teaching, why we're teaching it, or how the program works. So the Amplify program, I happen to teach four sections of sixth grade and one section of eighth grade. So I kind of get to see both the beginning and the end of the program. We have it available both digitally and we also have it available in print, which to me is really important, because there are some times that you're just flat out like, today we're gonna be annotating, we're gonna be working the story. I want you to highlight this, I want you to find this in the text. The students can access the material both here. So for example, it took us a little bit, now I can pretty much say, today we are in unit three, lesson 12. Everyone, can you please find lesson 12 with me? So we had just finished last week, um, our narrative unit, where we had been looking at some different authors. And then we were trying to write a little bit of our own personal narrative. They have kind of mapped out here, as you follow in here, it'll have like the same readings. So sometimes we are listening to it digitally, sometimes we do read it here in our book. The students can complete work and this is part of both the fun and also the stress of it. Sometimes we decide, you know what? Today, we're gonna brainstorm. So like, some days I'm like, today, we're gonna brainstorm in our writing journal first, then we'll come over here and we're gonna type it out online. So each student has both their book as well as their writing journal. And, oh, turn one over there. Yeah, absolutely, that's just the eighth grade and the sixth grade one here. Um, within a typical lesson, the students will work on, we start with some kind of vocabulary work first, 'cause we know that vocabulary is one of our five pillars of reading. And after we do that, throughout the course of the lesson, we'll usually come back to a text where we have been practicing our close reading skills, where we will look at a text with different lenses. So today, we might be rereading this text and we're looking specifically for what the author's intention was. Or today, we're gonna reread this and we're looking for sequencing of events. We're looking at how we can summarize the text. Usually with each lesson, we also have a writing prompt. Sorry, I'm like, the Lord's not liking me there. So within a lesson, we'll also usually have some form of a write. Oh, this, 'cause this one was introduce the text, of course, that one didn't. Um, so we'll have a write. This little pencil with the plus sign, one of the things we are able to help kiddos with is depending on their level, we are able to adapt. So for example, one student might need sentence starters. We can give them sentence starters, sometimes we'll do that as a whole class, just to get the brains going. Or sometimes the kid's gonna access it on here. Uh, light bulb means this is the time for us that we turn, we share, we'll go through our writing together. Sometimes we revise our writing in class. Um, Mrs. Esquillo mentioned homework. The Amplify program does almost have like a daily assignment. They're called solos. And it took the kids a little bit of time, but these are the type of questions that students will be seeing on both the forward exam as well as in high school, the ACT. So a lot of like sample-type questions that we'll work through together. After they've read a short part of a story, we'll go through and we'll look and answer some of these questions together. All this stuff comes together in the end. One nice thing about it is I do have like a running portfolio of each student. So I can pull open a student and show them, here's your writing from the beginning of the year to now. So even if we do work on paper, we'll come in here, we'll type, put it together here, so that we have a running, if any parent asks, here's your child's writing from the whole year. So as you can see, there's six big units. Uh, after talking with some different educators, can't always get to everything. So we're trying to do what's called the 100-day plan. We're even learning through our first fly that 100 days is a little ambitious. So we are taking parts of the different units. So we're making sure that we hit like writing, literature, but we also have informational text units. So like here in sixth grade, we have an informational unit on chocolate as well as Titanic. All over in the eighth grade, we're gonna be looking at, um, our next unit is actually gonna be narratives, but historical narratives, as well as reading historical documents. So we're gonna be practicing our reinfluency with the Declaration of Independence, as well as the Gettysburg Address. We're gonna look at excerpts from the narrative of the life of Frederick Douglass, and also narrative of soldiers in the Revolutionary War. So we can look at major events in American history through both narrative and historical fiction. So we're bringing in some of our own stuff, too. So we wanna make sure we still cover some of those things. I guess, do you have any questions about how the program's running or what we're doing with it?
How are the kids accepting it?
Um, it is a lot more right. So at first, there was a little bit of, but as we're getting going with it, I've actually been really impressed with the, just, okay, let's go, let's do it. And we'll do like a 10-minute write. I'll set a timer, 'cause your goal is to write for the full 10 minutes. I'd say at this point, well over 80% of kiddos can write for 10 minutes going. Please, so there to provide support is, what else do you think we can add? So some days we'll come back in, list will be your writing from yesterday. We're gonna revise it, we're gonna look for a spot where we can slow down the moment. Or where can we add sensory details? How do we write dialogue at this point?
And building up that stamina is, it's a big thing at the middle school level. And they're writing now more than ever using Amplify, which is great.
I was in Lee's classroom just a few days ago, though, and they're looking at text and analyzing and putting together. And I think we got to every single kid in that classroom, everyone had an answer for that specific piece, and it was right on check with what they were doing. So there's engagement happening. And I, obviously, it's partially the content, but it's 100% the educator in them who's facilitating the action. So kudos to Lee and all his work, 'cause he's a phenomenal educator and we're lucky to have him in our thought-along. Um, but, sorry.
So again, I invite you in at any point if you wanna see it in action or see exactly how it's being used or what's been done with it. Absolutely, please come on in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did. Well done.
All right. Okay. Julian?
Still going.
Okay.
It's like the Energizer. So that's ELA. We don't wanna leave math out of the mix here. So we'll start, just like we did with ELA, we'll look at our forward results. So on our forward results that was taken last spring, we are at 37.5% of our students are proficient in math. Um, now we keep that number in mind as we compare it to our I-Ready fall diagnostic. And here is where we are sitting at. Remember, the yellow at this point, we're not concerned about. This is kind of where we would expect students to come in at the start of their year. What we wanna do is see that shrink as we go through. So we'll do some comparisons when I come back in the mid-year, so you can see how that data has changed. But still, um, somewhat consistent with what we have with forward. So here, you can see the breakdown by grade level. And then from there, you can see the different domains that they focus on in math. So here you have number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. And so we are able to break down and see where students are getting their I-Ready minutes if they're doing like geometry lessons. We can see, like if all of a sudden they're struggling, we can dig into those skills and know specifically what we need to be doing to support those students. Now, if you think back to that 37.5%, now according to I-Ready, um, the typical growth, if everyone just made one year's growth, we would land in about 49% proficient by the end of the year. If everyone was getting that stretch growth, then we'd be at 68. Now, eventually, we're not quite there yet. We aren't doing two SLOs, um, but we will get to. Um, but we will get to a point, next year I'll talk about where our goal would be to have a math SLO as well. Um, and here is the reason why we are not doing one yet. We right now are doing an audit on math. Okay, we know that, like I had mentioned with CKLA and Amplify being that bridge, they're working together. We use big ideas at the secondary level and they do bridges down at FLC. They don't bridge well together, okay? Um, and we know we need to find something that is going to be a continuation, that's going to continue to support those skills and maintain that momentum all the way through high school. And so we are looking at exploring a new math tool, um, for 612. And we've already visited one site in our October PD Day. Matt was able to take our math department out as well as ML. I don't know if any sped teachers went with you, I think it was in high school. Um, they, they went to Manasha and saw CPM in action. The other tool that we're looking at is Illustrator. And they will be going out to a site in November to see that in action. Um, and then from there, we hope to finalize an adoption in the spring, do training in the summer, and then launch this new tool in the fall. So my plan will be to come to you next fall with the math goal and a ELA goal, now that that curriculum tool will be in place. Now, coupled with all this, keep in mind, Power Hour is not just ELA, you know, focused. It's ELA and math. So students are still going to be getting a math intervention there. Um, and then eventually with the help of Dr. Mino, working with Brad Brinkie as well, and Dwayne Harkoff at the high school, trying to determine what are some intervention tools that we can start exploring and experimenting with. Uh, we just don't have an interventionist right now that can kind of feed us those things. So we're just kind of doing our own research and stuff like that. And so stay tuned, more to come on that end as well. Any questions on math? So, um, with all of this, I know Matt has talked to you about our universal attendance. And so I want to talk to you about how is everything that we're doing ties into our universal attendance. And there are two main areas of focus. When I go into classrooms and do observations, what am I looking for? I am looking for the evidence of the high impact instructional strategies. So when Jen comes to us at CT and PD Days and she's showing us vocabulary strategies and all these other literacy tools, I'm expecting if you're doing anything with text in your class, and you should be doing stuff with texts every day, that I'm seeing one of the instructional strategies that you learned and that you're implementing it. Okay? And so, and I will be able to give feedback to that teacher based on how that's going and what I'm seeing. Um, and then depending on how things are going, and some teachers already reach out to Jen, hey, like, you showed us this during CT time, hey, could you come in and help me plan for this? Or could you come in and model this for me? That's what her job is and she's a rock star at it. So I'm really excited because she has developed some amazing relationships with our staff, not just at Bessie but at the high school. She makes it so comfortable for her to come in and coach. It doesn't feel like an evaluation. It feels like support and that's what you want that relationship to be between a coach and a teacher. So that's super exciting work. The other thing that I'm looking for when I go into all classrooms is that the learning target is posted, not just as a visual display, but teachers are also verbally reviewing and engaging students in that throughout the lesson. Because what we know about teacher clarity is if students understand what they're doing and what the success criteria is, they're more inclined to be engaged because they know what the end goal is. They know, by the end of class, I gotta be able to show you this. And that is really important that all teachers are very clear with what that is for every class. Uh, another piece, just to kind of give you an update in terms of culture and belonging, just a quick update. Carrie's not here. She'll come and visit with you at some point, probably mid-year. Um, but I did ask for just an update and how are we doing with attendance? Um, and I have to say like 96.6% attendance rate, that is unbelievable. Our students are getting to school. And if our students are getting to school and they're doing Power Hour every day, that makes me super excited because we're going to be able to reach those students. Um, because I've been in districts where attendance was down in the 70%. It's really hard to close gaps when your kids aren't in school. But that is, we're just knocking it out of the park there. Um, and then you can also see that 93.2% of our students are not at risk for chronic absenteeism. So, I mean, we, Carrie and I talk every week and she updates our SST meeting. And we always say, what's the update on attendance and truancy letters? She hasn't had a lot to report lately, which is awesome. But a big shout out to Carrie on this because she is proactive with reaching out to families, setting up a meeting if she, if attendance seems to be faltering, gets plans in place. Um, she really does an amazing job at that, um, part of her role and plays many different hats. But that, she does a great job of connecting with families and that's why our rate is where it's at. Couple other fun things to, um, keep in mind, always trying to find ways to connect our students, our students that maybe are struggling in other areas. And, um, kudos to Kim Road and some of the new things she's doing this year. She developed this fam jam lunch hour. Um, we have students that have, you know, some struggling family dynamics at home and they don't always relate to with their peers. And she's been able to identify them and bring them together so that they can be like, I'm not alone. And there's been a lot of comfort for our students in that group. The other one that she's been working really hard on, and this is a new idea this year and it's just been awesome. We have some students, some of our multilingual students that, you know, they're immersed into our culture, they're pushing the boundaries of language acquisition. But, you know, English doesn't always sound right when they come out and they're a little self-conscious and it makes them to be a little bit more on the quiet end in class. She developed this group of some of our ML students with our high school Spanish 5 kids. And she is telling them, hey, like, they're learning Spanish, but they feel a little funny sometimes when it doesn't come out well. What if we come together and you guys meet and you play some games and you practice English and Spanish on each other? And it's, it's just started. Margot Goff is also a player in this. She's welcoming these students into her room. Um, and it is a game changer for our ML students to start, you know, feeling comfortable with not always being perfect with their language. And it's a great experience for our older high school kids that they can be leaders too and show their vulnerability that, hey, it's not easy learning a different language because I'm trying to learn yours too. So just some awesome things that we're really working on in terms of building a sense of belonging at Bessie Allen. So looking ahead, um, we'll continue to focus our professional development on those universal instruction practices. Everyone's a literacy teacher now at Bessie Allen. So you'll hear us talk a lot about the different tools and stuff that we're bringing to them. Again, I mean, I just happen to be a supporter in the room, but Jen and Kara are really the heavy lifters on pushing that instruction forward. Um, Power Hour just started today, so like the jury's out. Um, but I am excited to monitor the effectiveness of that. Um, I've blocked off a lot of time in my calendar so I could be in and out of classrooms. Um, teachers are making their goal sheets available to me so that I can just pull a folder and then go meet with kids and here's what your goal you wrote, like, let's talk about how you're doing. Um, just to kind of get a level of involvement from me. Um, I did meet with all of our homerooms, um, via Google Meet when we launched this, just so that they know that I'm 100% on board with this and I'm in their, in, in the trenches with them. And we're all, we're all rooting for them to do the best work they possibly can. Um, from an SEL standpoint, we did complete our NextPath survey. Um, we didn't quite get through all the data analysis of that. I'll report out to, to you on that in the mid-year, um, meeting. And then I did mention it further. I know, John, you asked like, what are some future needs? We'll know more after that mid-year diagnostic as we plan, um, for next year. So I'll be able to share out at that point. Questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I appreciate the fact that you're noticing the gaps and that we weren't doing the same thing at the elementary level as the middle school and like bringing that continuation in. I know like CKLA, speaking for my kids at FLC, my son did not have CKLA when he was in kindergarten and my daughter did. And I can notice a difference in the way that they learn how to read and their literacy. And I would say that my son is probably more, he's a stronger academic student than my daughter is. But she learned how to read a lot quicker than he did and did a lot better. And I think they're both really interested in the lessons and I think it's really awesome that that's continuing.
The future is really exciting. I mean, I know we are just anticipating, but five, six years from now, when those kindergartners get up to middle school, I think we're going to see a total, we're going to have a different conversation because the, there won't be the intense need for intervention like there is now, which is great. Um, hopefully we're talking more about enrichment opportunities, but yeah.
Yeah, and just a big shout out to the teachers who are implementing that. I know, you know, last year at the elementary level, they were like, well, we're learning this as the kids are learning it. And, you know, as you mentioned before, I think that that's awesome.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a love-hate relationship right now if Lee's still in there. He probably wants to like, you know, go after me, but, um, they're persevering even through the struggles and, um, they're, we're just learning and growing together.
Thank you for doing that.
One question I had is, I got hit a couple of times with conferences coming right before trick or treating the other day. Is, and we talked about this a little bit about not doing GPAs anymore right now at Bessie Allen. So if you could just talk about that, even though I said where that will end up. Are they coming back down the line or?
Yep. And so we did remove GPAs, um, from our report card starting this fall. And I know we've had conversations. There is a huge discrepancy between our honor roll and what our achievement debt is. You don't have 20% of your kids that are proficient in reading and like, you know, 75% of your kids are on the honor roll. Like, that doesn't equate. And so, um, we have to just dive into our grading practices and kind of, one of the things I think our teachers do a great job at, they, they recognize effort and, you know, time management and all those things. But that is, like, that's a separate form of feedback than it is the academic grade where you, a student can demonstrate their knowledge and skills, right? And so we have to navigate that. I would anticipate, once we are calibrated, we can bring back a GPA and you can be confident if your student got a 3.75 that, and their, their achievement scores are showing that, we can be confident that those two are aligned. Um, and, you know, one of the things I try to tell parents, like, K8, that's all skill development leading up into high school when it's credit bearing and you're earning, you know, credits to graduate. I, I, I'll say it publicly, I'm not a huge fan of grades at the middle school. Because I want kids to learn and grow and have the skills successful so that when they get to high school, it's not, oh my gosh, freshman year, I'm struggling because I can't read this. Like, I want those skills to be all filled in so that they don't have the stresses of that. You know, there's always the talk of standardized grading and things like that. I would love to see where we do an academic and an effort grade, have two different buckets. I think both are highly valuable. I mean, the conversations that you can have with kids around their effort and their cooperation and time management, those are like, those are the skills workers, you know, employers want. You know, for people that own businesses. And I've been a part of districts where they do surveys and ask area employers, what do you want to see? And that's how they develop their life and career skills or college and career readiness grade. I wouldn't like to see us as a district start playing in that arena. I know I've talked with Matt. I think that's kind of the next step. Because then we can actually really get down to an accurate academic grade. That was a long, long answer.
No, I think, you know, people were wondering, so I think you explaining it like that helps. Appreciate it. And just the last thing I say is, I really appreciate this and I, I like the way this is formatted and the way we're going through this. One thing I would, uh, kind of building on to what John said, and it's probably too early in the year, but maybe we could add a section if, if the principals think there's something the board should be doing or could be doing or would help. And I don't want to put you on the spot now because you have time to think about. But moving forward, if there's action steps that the board can do, that you guys would recommend.
I'd take you to see that mid-year, definitely. So when we start seeing this data come in, right, I think there's definitely going to be some, uh, conversations to say, what can we do to make the lifts better for everybody?
Right now, we need to see how effective this intervention tool is. And once we know that, we're going to know what else is needed to, you know, close the gap further.
Alright.
Did I, was I good on time?
No, it's, it's just so great. Again, as we, we talked before, and this is so important, get under the hood of the instruction, uh, and really understand this. And our district is going to a data-driven cadence now. We're starting to really look at these numbers so that we can best help our kids. We have to own our current state, but then acknowledge that. And what are we doing to best help every single one of our students through that process? Lee, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody else. Kara, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, it's exciting as, Julian, thank you too as well. Appreciate it. Uh, as Julian mentioned too, just as we're getting started here and watch out in five years. As Barry Alvarez said to his ticket holders, you better get season ticket, uh, season tickets now because before you know it, you're not going to be able to get your hands on it. Alright, uh, the other quick, I'm actually just flip to bring our insurance presentation. And I know she's been waiting patiently here. Uh, Rayanne is going to come in and share a little bit about where we're at currently and some of the things, uh, we're looking to do, so.
It gets a little small on the screen, so. It's a little small here too.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rayanne Boden. I'm here from US Insurance Services. You may recognize the fact that I'm not the usual insurance consultant. Alex had a baby girl, uh, last Thursday, so he's taken a week or two of, uh, paternity leave. So I'm filling in for him. We're going to just go quickly through our, um, our budget projection and what we call our medical experience report. We have, um, the projection that shares exactly what, if we had no other factors, the district would need to budget for, um, for the upcoming year of 2026 for the medical insurance. However, when I'm taking you through this first set of paperwork, what I want you to pay attention to is the fact that we're significantly behind in our fund balance from what happened in 2024. And quite frankly, a little bit even before that, we've had some difficult years. And so we're going to be recommending a different increase to the budget than what you're going to see on the final projection. So if you take a look at this, this first set of papers, what this is, is this is what we call our medical experience report. And this is for the medical experience period ending September, um, 30th of 2025. So this is all the claims that have been paid in that timeframe. And it's comparing the total calendar year of 2024. So we look at, um, the first column here. It's total FIEs are fully insured equivalents. So if you had, if you took the premium equivalent that the district deposits each month, if you will, into its medical account, they take what the district budgets, they're 88% along with the 20, or the 12% that the employee's participation requirement is, they put that together and that's the total FIE or the fully insured equivalent. So for 2024, our net total for all claims paid was $3,473,746. Net means it's after stop-loss reimbursements, after prescription drug rebates, after any other kinds of reimbursements, employee deductibles, et cetera. The net plan costs were $4,557,258. That includes all the administration, um, all of those, uh, stop-loss premiums, all of that, uh, kind of expense. So our total fully insured equivalent was $4,164,849. Um, so our net cost against the fully insured equivalents gave us a medical loss ratio of 109.4%. Prescription drugs as a percent of the gross claims were 23.3%. A little bit high. The average these days is about 18 to 22%. So just a smidgen high in 2024. You can see as we move to 2025, that's increased. Our net claims per employee per year is $22,704. Um, and we had the average employee count of 153 in 2024. As we move to 2025, this is for nine total months of data, so we're missing three. Uh, and we're looking at the total fully insured equivalent of $4,002,986. So we're down, our net cost is at 85.3% loss ratio. Prescription drugs as a percent of gross claims, uh, is 26.5%. We had a significant increase in the cost and utilization patterns for specialty medications over the last year. And that has to do with some of our large claimants. Um, so our net claims are down on this piece of paper. What you're going to see when we come to the end is it's up to about $28,000 per employee, per year, um, to $17,330. And we are down, our average employee count on the health plan is down to 100. Um, to seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty, and we are down, our average employee count on the health plan is down to a hundred and forty-one employees. In twenty twenty-four, our stop-loss deductible, so that is a per belly button on the plan, if you will, stop-loss deductible, it was seventy-five thousand dollars. Our number, the number of claimants that hit, um, fifty percent, so they were hit, uh, thirty-seven five at least, were twenty-four claimants in twenty twenty-four and twelve so far in twenty twenty-five. The total number of claimants that were greater than fifty percent, um, of the stop-loss were, uh, was one million eight hundred thirty dollars, uh, two, eight hundred thirty, two hundred twenty-eight dollars for twenty twenty-four, and eight seventy-four five seventy in twenty twenty-five. The number of claimants that went over seventy-five thousand, five in twenty twenty-four, to the tune of three hundred ninety-eight thousand two seven three, and three in, um, twenty twenty-five, year-to-date at a hundred and four thousand four seventy-five. So less hits this year, um, and certainly a lower amount of dollars. Some of that is very much reflective of the things the district did for twenty twenty-five. We added Garner to increase employee participation with going to high-cost, low-quality providers. All of, um, all of those things, uh, we added a different pharmacy benefit manager, and we're moving things in the absolute right direction here. So, the next page then just kind of goes through this in a month-over-month way. And just if you take the total along the bottom, our total administration fees for the ten months, or the nine months, sorry, is a hundred thousand three twenty-five. Miscellaneous fixed costs, these would be, um, different things such as, quite frankly, the consulting fees, uh, are, are a big part of that. And then stop-loss premium, the fixed cost total, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, uh, seven fifty-one. Medical claims, a million five oh four. Prescription drug claims, five hundred fourteen thousand. Prescription drug rebates, seventy-six thousand oh eight one. Over-the-stop-loss reimbursements, seventy-five thousand nine fifty-four. Claims runout, so this was, would have been claims from, uh, twenty twenty-four, paid in twenty twenty-five. This total of all claims, total fully insured equivalents, the actual cost, um, the fully insured to actual, we're, we're running at about an eighty-six point two percent loss ratio for twenty twenty-five. Then we are looking at paid claims, um, and you can look at, if you look at the center here, the little box, this shows you the percent of claims and the dollar amounts for all other claims versus those that were fifty percent to seventy-five percent of the specific stop-loss deductible, seventy-five to a hundred, and then over a hundred percent. So, just like if you remember the old days of insurance, I've been doing this for close to four decades now. It used to be that we would say twenty percent of the claimants were eighty percent of the costs. It really still holds very much true, doesn't change a whole lot. And then these are some of the conditions that we're seeing as high-cost claimants. And you can see it as you look at these, not necessarily worrying so much about what is happening with folks that are high-cost claimants, because quite frankly, that's what insurance is for. But if we look at how many of the claimants, for example, number two and number three, um, the medical cost is literally half to a third of the cost of their prescription medications. So, um, it's the way of the, the way of the space now that we're in is prescription drugs are going to be taking over a significant portion of the healthcare cost. The next, uh, the next page is just a little bit more of a breakdown of, uh, the number of large claimants and, and how that breaks out. So we've spent enough, enough time on that. Then pages five, six, and seven are the same pieces of information, but for twenty twenty-four. So as you look at twenty twenty-four on page, on the bottom of page five, we were running at a hundred and eight point seven percent loss ratio. And our total of all of our claims plus our fixed cost was four million one hun- one hundred sixty-four thousand eight four nine. Uh, we had budgeted significantly less than that, obviously. So we're, we're in the hole about a half a million dollars just in the course of one year. And the plan, as I understand it, has not been in the black, um, for a while since starting self-funding. So as we moved us further and further behind, if we only take an increase to exactly what we need, we're not gonna have the right amount in our fund balance to make your auditors happy or to make the district feel like there's not gonna come a time when we're gonna be taking significantly more money from the general fund than we, than we want to be. And, under the, under the law, and, um, the way this works is you, you'd be well-advised by, I think, your auditors, by us, but eventually, we want to have a goal of nine months of claims plus fixed cost in the bank. Um, because we've seen how claim cycles can really fluctuate over the course of one to three years. Obviously, we're not gonna pick up a million dollars in, um, one year overnight, it, it can't be done. So, what we're, what we're taking a look at advising the district to do is, as we go through the second set of papers, this is our budget projection, the first page literally explains everything that you need to know about what this calculation is. Um, I, we shouldn't have let the math teacher go, if he's gonna walk us all through this. But the reality is, um, this is an actuarial science, and the way the underwriters do it is they give certain weights to the year. And even if we use two-roll in twelve months, so we use August of twenty-three through July of twenty-four, and then August of twenty-four through July of twenty-five, you've got that bad year, that's still at least six months of the claim data. And unfortunately, the six months that it is, is the last part of the year where everybody's met their due obstacle, things are clicking along. I'm having those, I'm having those surgeries, or at least we're paying for whatever we had done in the summer. As you work your way down, it's saying, all we would need, how well the district's managed, how well things have, um, turned around with the various new partners and vendors that we've established this year, we would have needed a one point one two percent rate increase. What we're advising the district to do is to take a ten percent increase this year. We realize the, um, impact that that has on both the district and the staff. If we look at this at, as, um, adding basically another four hundred thousand dollars, ten percent, we add four hundred thousand to the budget, we're at, I believe, the number was around negative three hundred thousand this year. This will put us a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand to the good. So that's what we're advocating as a start. We'll look to incrementally continue to increase those reserve funds and, um, and, and measure that every month of the upcoming year, when, when we talk about these new medical experience reports, and make sure that we're continuing to trend in the right direction. We do have some, uh, some plan design, uh, tweaks and, and other things that we can share and implement with the district should we need them. But at this point, um, we feel just the average rate increase across the state of Wisconsin in our school districts, and we work with a hundred and twelve of them, has been a roughly fifteen to seventeen percent. Um, that's where the Wisconsin Counties Association has been, their group health trust had an average of eleven. Um, the state went up on average eleven, um, in this area of the state, it's been a little bit more like fourteen to sixteen. So we're looking at being lower than average, but keeping up with medical inflation and medical trend at that ten percent. Any questions or comments?
I have ten percent in there.
And we're not changing what we're doing with the employees as far as any of that?
The plans or anything?
Plan, design changes, no.
Your employees, I will say, have been absolute rock stars at embracing the different cost stabilization, um, vendor things we put in last year. They, uh, they've been terrific with Garner, they're, they're using the applications, they're making the changes that are necessary, and we're seeing it in the data. So, um, we're, we're just hoping, again, claim cycles are about every three to five years. You've gone through, it seems like the difficult one, we're hoping we're on the right tri- trajectory. And as, if we can be reasonable and prudent through the next couple of years, I think we'll be, um, making a really, some really good progress on getting that increase to the planned reserve balance, right where we need it to be. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna move on to Mr. Quadra, who's jumped in here to talk a little bit about Hall of Fame boards. We, we mentioned this a little bit, uh, a while back, but I just wanna come back to it and share an update of what's happening. So Matt, the floor is yours.
Awesome, let's pass this around, um, take a look at some designs we have drawn up. Um, so, one of the things, meeting with a bunch of coaches and a lot of different people in the community, um, one thing kept coming up was our record boards, recognizing our student athletes and making sure they're up to date and they're easily seen. Um, so this is the draft that we've kind of gone with. There are some tweaks with, like, on that girls' track and field, you can see some missing spots. Um, so we are still working with them, they took pictures and, um, updated what we currently have. Um, these are actually slides as well, so as a record is broken, it can be slid out, a new one's put in. Um, and we can kind of keep up with that as we're going. Um, right now, we, the only records that we currently have are the ones that are in our gym. So that's why it's only reflecting so many sports. Um, we wanna try to collect more data and try to find all that stuff, um, to get everyone recognized at some point. Um, these, um, as well, if you look at the powerlifting one, it looks like you can't put any more people on that, it's the last one on there. Um, I'm having them adjust it so we can keep adding state qualifiers, that's a state qualifying board, um, so we can keep adding those to it. So, um, the goal is to make sure we can access them really easy, update them, um, as soon as someone does break a record. The turnaround time is about two weeks to get one of these plaques put in, so the student athletes that are breaking the records can be recognized. Um, and they're pretty decent size, um, they're aluminum, so they last as well. So another thing we're talking about is, does the track and field go out by the track and field? Do we let them be utilized out there? Kind of seeing that, so we're getting some feedback from coaches and athletes where they wanna be seen and represented. In the gym, as you walk in, the bleachers are off to your right, the big ones, there's all those banners right up on top. And talking with multiple people, those are sponsors of the past. Um, they're not all donating to us anymore of either we can keep that connection open or what happened. Um, so we wanna make sure that we're gonna actually take those down, put these record boards there, so these can be seen, easily seen. Uh, if you look at the record boards that are out there, they're tucked away and hard to be seen. Um, but with that, the people that are currently donating to us, we are gonna get a banner put out there by our concession stands, um, more visible areas all around. Uh, with talking with Oriole Nation, we figured that would be the best option. We, instead of just housing them in one spot in the gym, get them onto our concession stands. So that is our record boards, um, and on top of that, I've been working with our Hall of Fame. If you had a chance going to school, it's up and running. Um, and if you actually click in there, now you can go in there and actually look at all the records and go through that, see the conference champs. The conference champ banners are in there, um, all the different record, even if they're not on here, there's maybe some other ones that are a longer tally, we have them all in there. Um, so it's easy to be seen, um, accessible, and we've got some really good feedback on that Hall of Fame. So yeah, questions about?
And I'd also say that this creates more consistency in the gym, we get different styles of them right now too, and so the consistency in matching and mirroring, that's, I think, a very important thing just for look and aesthetic as well. Sorry, Katie's interrupting you.
No, is this the new logo? And I've been like.
Yeah, seen it everywhere.
Yeah.
Yes, um, so that is a logo that, when we hand out actually an athletic letter, that is the logo that we use.
This is an old logo.
It's an older logo that we're kind of re-sensituating.
It's a retro.
Um, and I really like the idea of keeping that with our activities, because if that's the physical letter we're handing out, is that logo, kind of branding it that way as well.
That makes sense.
Talking to people, just kind of getting a new brand out there and everything along those lines, just, um, and I like the style of those.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
If you were to put the events that happen out here, at that, like, where, where would they go? And then my other question is, would we include all our sports? You know what I mean, we don't have girls' boy soccer, we don't have, I, I don't know where it ends, you know what I mean? But what, what's included?
Yep, so the idea would be basically the ones that compete at a state level. So, on the boys' and girls' soccer, we would have to collect those stats. The really big issue with, you know, a little football, there's no records to be found anywhere. Um, and then the football platform and even the soccer platform that they were putting on their stats and just got thought out by another company and erased all the stats. So we can't even go back right now and try to find it, so we're digging, trying to reach out to different community members that might have those from past. Um, yeah, the goal is to hopefully, this is the first batch of those, and then we're trying to work on the backend of, we want to recognize all the sports.
And John, were you asking, like, out by the stadium?
Yeah, actually, I mean, that would make sense to me, that like our track would be out there, uh, outside sports that use that facility, would.
Um, and that's one thing that we kind of have to pick out where we want this to be seen and go. Um, I, if we can make it work underneath the bleachers, is kind of an area where I like it, stay out of the weather. Um, they can be high enough up, kids can't play with them. Um, if you went to one of the youth nights or anything like that, there's a lot of them over there, so keeping that in mind, um, with them. So, that would be the kind of thought process of when we go over there. Now we got this measured out, we know where we wanna put them, how does this actually all look at the end there?
Yeah, I think they look great.
Awesome, I know if you, I hope it shows up a little better, but the, the Oriole head is in the background of the, I just don't know if you can't see it.
Yeah.
Um, it's supposed to be a little.
It's like a watermark on the backside, you can see it in the middle.
So I'm hoping that when they actually print the boards, they're gonna be, stand out a little bit more. Um, that's one thing we're playing around with, trying to, he's ensuring me that it'll stand out more, um, but.
And you said the conference, like, banners that we have, championship banners, those are staying?
The conference championship banners, we'll say, yep, those gotta be updated, I gotta get a couple more numbers up there. I know boy soccer wasn't updated last year, um, but those should be updated now in the digital Hall of Fame.
Okay, cool.
For currency there.
Not changing it too much here, but, um, football team last week, they had the extra game, I did email you to ask you about that.
Yeah, it was really exciting, um, we, uh, Principal Harcoff, myself and another coach actually got to go and work the chain game for that game. So we got to go on the sidelines, and we were the away teams, we played at neutral site. Um, we played Boston, they're two hours away, so we found a site that was an hour away, um, played at four-thirty, um, played it like it was a varsity game, and the kids really responded well, and it's really encouraging to see when we, that team only had the same numbers we had, and we played a very competitive game. And, um, talking to both coaches afterwards, there's like, this is what we need to continue to build our programs. Um, good games like this, um, competitive, um, fun, no one was really, um, if you watched the Packer game, anything like that, too much during the time or anything, so, um, it was really cool to see the kids excited and like, um, the buzz in the school the next day. You guys actually win? Did you guys actually win? That's amazing, so cool.
And I gotta give a lot of credit to Matt, and just going out and extending and finding the next game too, because to give our kids another opportunity, another experience. And then obviously, Coach Parra and everyone else just encouraging those kids to continue to play and, and, uh, getting it done, uh, last week. So it's great for the squad and for the future too, for that.
Right, doing something that common sense, but I, I'm sure you're looking at that concept with the non-conference.
Yes.
Well, right, there's other schools out there.
We got two new, new conference games next year, we're not playing the same con- non-conference game, so, um, we worked really hard at finding the right fits for us.
That's, that's great.
Yeah. Um, just highlighting some other sports as we talk about it, soccer, um, got the first playoff win, and they're saying it's the first ever, I went back to the records as far as I could find, and I couldn't find a win other than a forfeit we received a couple of years back. But it's really exciting that things are going in the right direction there. Um, we're looking at some other options to help continue that team grow in the right direction, but they're doing some good things. Um, volleyball, they ended their conference, uh, Volleyball, they ended their conference uh year with a win against another conference opponent. So that was really cool, the motivation on there, they're starting to strum it all together. Who else, man, cross country, we saw some really good uh times, uh some PRs happening at a tough course. So it seems like everything's going that right direction of what we're trying to preach and trying to get. Talking just about all sports in general, I started a student leadership committee and they, we got to meet last um two weeks ago, I want to say, and I just let them have the floor, since this is the first one ever, um what they want to talk about. And I was just shocked with how much they had to say, and in a good way. Of like they really, these people were nominated from whoever in our uh schools and then selected off that. But they just had so much they wanted to get off their chest of, we need to do this, this is the way we do it. And it just opened my eyes that these kids really care and really, really want to be good. But they all said, we just have a losing mindset. And I challenged them to, hey, how can we change that and what can we do? So in this next month, they're working on talking to the other students of, why do you think that way? Why does this go on? And we're going to kind of approach that topic next meeting. Well, one thing we want to do is bring in a mindset leadership coach and have anyone that wants to attend, not even athletics, just anyone, um come in and listen to that because there's some pretty cool things that they can help.
After the Dodgers series, I'm connecting with Lucas Jaden and I'll try to get him back down too for our kids and Steve Jones. I guess that's, if you're going to get, he, so he's Dave Roberts' like coach one-on-one, so he's busy right now a little bit with the World Series. But uh he, I talked to him prior to the series and we just discussed like how can we continue to help? And that's one of those things and those areas and he did such a good job with students too, not just adults, really connecting and as a coach himself too, it just makes a lot of sense as well, so.
They're really, they're really excited for that, so um we call ourselves the flight crew. So there'll be some different things, you'll start to see some apparel for just those students that got nominated, um but they're starting to take off.
But these are the things that are happening under good in activities and athletics, right? And not to mention like our speed and strength and all the stuff that's going on in the weight room, there's just a lot of good stuff that's happening. And if we can keep that up with fidelity, just like the learning as well, then watch out.
I just asked Megan if it's sale one because they were collecting it tonight, she said it's going to be a little bit, but they sold a lot.
All right.
Sweet.
Yeah, just keep continuing to ask good opportunities.
I just want to just thank you, I know it's been, feels like you've been here forever. But it's been three months and just the amount of effort that you put in, but you also put effort that gets result. I think that's pretty cool and I, you can see the kids really bought into it and just, I mean, it's just a completely different feel, so just thank you.
Yeah, really, um but I'll say it's kind of corny, but I kept talking to the kids about this mindset and we just are just starting to say it to each other and starting to catch on a little bit, but it's cool to care. And that was one thing is like the kids that cared were bogged down by the kids that didn't care. So we just kept talking about it's cool to care and now kids will randomly stop me in the hallway and say it's cool to care. Absolutely, it's cool to care, um so.
Sounds like you need a shirt that says.
It's cool, yeah.
It's coming, it's coming, right?
I have a shirt, guys, so I'll find a way to get that in here somehow.
Market that baby.
Yeah, right, yes.
Well, Matt, thank you so much and uh, yeah.
I have one question, with cross country, with the co-op ending with Oakfield, we going to have enough to field our own cross country team in the future, you think, and what's?
The numbers are definitely right on that border. Now, we could always field a cross country team, like I'm not going to.
I guess my score, yeah.
Correct, yeah, that's.
This sport is near, near to my heart.
Yes, so um trying to find ways to increase those numbers and what we can do is going to be something that we're going to work for, um we're doing our end of the uh season um meetings here in the next week. And that's one thing, that's how are we going to continue to improve those numbers. So co-ops are something I'm learning a lot about and how they work and everything, um but the conference has to agree to it. And in the transition, they took a vote. Because before, we got to stop it, um and now with the transition, they voted it down. So it's always something that we brought back to the table and discussed.
Awesome, all right, thanks, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the North Bonalak early literacy plan, the remediation plan. We talked about this, it's already part of our policy, we just have to have something in and on our website as part of Act Twenty. I don't know if you have any questions about this or this was even included for you, but we already established the policy in terms of like, if students don't make that cut, it's not like they're going to be held back from where they're at. We're creating those plans, this is what Lauren's been talking about again and again, it's all a process. We're there with the student, we're not just throwing them to the wayside, we're really trying to figure out how to help them out. But this lays all that out in a nutshell on a few different pages of how we analyze that, what we're doing, the assessments that we're using and where things are at, that you've heard time and time again. But the, this has to be laid out and put on our website as every other school district has within the Act Twenty bill um to make part of it. Any questions specifically to this?
Okay, all right, fair enough. That brings, I think we are all done with my report, so on to new business.
Excellent, all right, well, we we have two items for new business, so the first is to consider approval of the early literacy plan that Dr. Mino shared with us before and just went over giving that on our online site. So look for a motion uh to approve that early literacy plan.
Matthews, yes, Hawk.
Yes.
Gellings.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Our next item, Rhea, did you want to share anything on this before, it's for the consider approval of the budget amendment and tax levy?
No, uh just if there are any questions, I did uh put notes next to your document that just outlined um the changes. There really aren't any surprises. I would say the biggest surprises are, or the biggest surprise is that the vouchers actually increased. Uh I thought I had built enough in there to cover the vouchers, but they actually came in higher than what we thought.
We know how many kids that is.
We don't, they will not release that. Yeah, we would like them to so that we can just, you know, double check and because we do for open enrollment and there's always kids that are caught that we have to adjust, so.
I, just a side note to that too, I mean, I know we've been saying for how many years, like it would be nice to show transparency in our tax bill. I met with Nick Leonard uh just a week or two ago and he said, hey, how would we go about doing this, can we do this from the village level? And he wasn't even aware that that was happening, so uh it was kind of insightful for him to just know that that much of our taxes were going to that, uh but what we need to do is go to the county. The county is that agent that actually controls the tax bill. So I'm going to work with Matt Steinbarth too from Fonalak and then also Nick Leonard and a couple other people from the village to see how we can move that along and uh change it for the future, just so, again, transparency and you know, of what is actually out there so people can actually acknowledge like what that is, so just a side, side note.
It's good to try, it'll be interesting to see how.
Yeah, yeah, Ricky can help me too.
I don't think it's my job.
So what you have in front of you, those last two columns of that document, just show what was proposed at the annual meeting versus um what is being amended tonight. So we just need approval of the amendments. And then the final levy amount, which we had a lot of discussion on last meeting about bringing that mill rate up to seven dollars and fifty-five cents. So that's down at the bottom in the last column.
Good. Right there, Maria?
Yes, the darker highlighted.
And I know this was all in our packet, so I don't, I'll leave it if there are any other questions, otherwise I'll look for a motion to consider the approval of the budget amendment and tax levy called out in the document.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll armor ready.
Okay, Gellings.
Yes.
Uh Germaine.
Yes.
Matthew, yes, Hawk.
Yes.
All right, uh our next item is to go to closed session, so look for a motion to go to closed session at seven forty PM.
Correct, your last call.
Yeah, shout out to Maria, uh puts her for all her time and dedication to the district, this is the last time she gets to do this with us at this point in time unless we consult her out and come back in. But she's always welcome, she's always an Oriole and we so appreciate everything she's done for the district for the last, what, how many years now? Fourteen, fourteen, so thank you so much.
Come on a member meeting?
Yes, well, we'll see.
If I can sit back there.
Yeah, absolutely, you're all in, welcome.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been an amazing journey, it's, I I have absolutely no regrets. I um I was glad to start my career here and end my career here as well. I'm not going anywhere though for seven weeks, so.
Sure.
I'll be around and I'll be around after to help where I can, but thank you. I'm so grateful, it's a great board to work for and a good superintendent to work for as well, so wonderful district.
We're lucky to have you.
Thanks.
So, all right, uh we will look for a motion to move to closed session.
I would like to move. Second.
Okay, the roll.
Hawk.
Yes.
Matthew, yes, Gellings.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
All right, we are now in, going to be going into closed session.